Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the executive, September's meeting of the executive. And welcome to all. Hopefully, there will be no rockets taking off and landing softly in the Atlantic or wherever. We'll have a more normal meeting, obviously, after a busy day down in Westminster, but we shall carry on regardless with the work. So any apologies for absence, please, first, Rachel?
Thank you. We have apologies from Andy Gutherson, Executive Director for place, but we have Karen Kassar, Assistant Director, Highways, here attending.
Thank you for that. Item two, then, decorations of interest. Are there any, please? I'm not seeing any, thank you. So we'll move straight on to item three. Any announcements by members of the executive or any executive directors? No. Okay. We'll then move on to item four, which is minutes of the meeting of this executive held on the 5th of July. Is it you wish I sign these as a true and accurate record? Is that agreed? Thank you. Then we go straight to item five, then, which is domestic abuse support services recommissioning. councillor Bradwell.
Thank you very much. Yes, obviously, we've got the recommission of domestic abuse services. It is quite an important support service that we give to people who have been subject to domestic abuse. It also gives outreach support as well to children as well, who, obviously, their mum or dad has been abused as well. So it's adults and children, and it is valued. And just to give you an estimate, an estimate that 30,000 adults aged between 16 and 74 are experiencing domestic abuse each year in the county, which is quite a number of people. Anyway, so we're going out to procure these services. I'm going to hand over to Martin in a minute. But just to say that we have this year, we've put quite a lot of money in. We do get a grant now from government for domestic abuse services, but unfortunately, it doesn't cover the outreach services. It just covers the refuge services that we provide. But we have actually this year worked with the PCC and Health, who have made a contribution to the money that we've put aside for the contract, because quite clearly, the police, they're there on the front line very often. You know, the person who's been abused, they will advise and put them, we've got a helpline now where people will ring through and find out what services they can get. So police have that frontline of the service. Obviously, then, we've got Health as well, because very often, people will divulge that they're being abused whilst they're in hospital and that. So, you know, there's several key other partners who we work with as well. So I won't go on anymore. I'll pass over to Martin, who I'm sure can just brief you on what we want to see. Oh, and I think Alina as well. Sorry, we've got two people here, but there's Martin and Alina, who will just give you the more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. It is, thank you. Good morning. Okay, so the recommendation is to approve the recommissioning and the procurement of a single countywide domestic abuse support service. The key rationale for this new service is built around the key corporate plan priorities and also the key priorities of Safer Lincolnshire partnership and the new domestic abuse partnership that was instilled as a result of the Domestic Abuse Act that came in in 2021. There's also the potential for further legislative changes during the proposed term of this contract, specifically linked to the Victims Bill, where there's the likelihood that they may impose a statutory duty on authorities linked to the community-based provision. As councillor Bradwell noted, the DA Act is quite specific to refuge and accommodation support and is quite silent on community-based support, for which this contract predominantly supports. The co-commissioning, as we described, is really key and in line with a lot of the national governance and guidance that is currently coming out, recommending that much more joined-up, system-wide approach. So in proposing these contracts, we looked at a service review and we looked at the real great positives of the current services and have used those to really model what we need in future services, taking into account the demand, but also the legislative changes that have either happened or are likely to happen in the future. The current provision we have is we have two contracts. So we have an independent domestic violence advisor service, which supports those highest-risk victims in the county, who are at high risk of harm or death. We also have an outreach service, which, as councillor Bradwell noted, supports adults, but also supports associated childrens of those adults in community provision to support them with support planning, safety advice, and their wellbeing beyond, hopefully, their experiences. The main challenges we've had with those contracts has been demand. So demand has significantly increased over the past 18 months into these support services. The way these support services were originally designed, the current eligibility criteria, as noted in the paper, is no longer sustainable for the demand that is being seen through the services. So current eligibility, anyone who is deemed to have a need with domestic abuse is supported currently through that service directly by a worker. So the main thing we're looking at in terms of the revised model that you'll see in the paper is looking at how we manage demand effectively while still maintaining good support to all victims who need it, but that's appropriate support with the right level of intervention according to their needs and risk status. In terms of the key changes, as you'll see in the model, we're revising the eligibility criteria to make sure that it's those with the specialist interventions access with those with the highest risk profiles, but not forgetting those all victims. We're strengthening the universal offer support so that all victims and specifically victims' families, friends and co-workers, who we know they disclose abuse to more likely, also have access to support through that universal offer. We're also making sure there's some new elements to the service. So the outreach and engagement team, one thing that came very clear with the demand and prevalence data was there are some victim profiles that are not accessing services as much as we would expect them to, because currently, the current service is very much an inward referral service. So we want to do some targeted intervention with hard-to-reach groups and specific work with key referrers. We also want to put in a new recovery service, and this has been seen across lots of comparator areas to be really effective in terms of preventing revictimisation and supporting people's resilience to go on to actually live good lives once their domestic abuse, hopefully, has ended. The key other parts within the new model, then, is around that intervention for adults and also making sure that intervention for children's is maintained. We found really, really good results in the current service in supporting children and their effects. I'll hand over to Alina.
Okay. So I'm going to summarise the commercial approach. So the proposal is a single countywide contract for three years plus a two-year extension. That does take account of the findings of the review work undertaken that Rachel's referred to, as well as their identified service model improvements. The scope will be for a single countywide service, including the previously separate commission, IDVA, and outreach services that Rachel alluded to. This being intended to maximise efficiencies and flexibility in the service delivery. The term will be a maximum period of five years, with initial period of three and the opportunities to extend up to two years. The market engagement was supportive of this approach as viable and attractive to the market. The payment for the core service will be by way of a fixed sum, so a block payment, so that's the 1.65 million. Bidders will be permitted to submit tender costs up to but not exceeding the fixed sum. Included as part of their pricing submission, the providers will be required to submit details of their volumes and outcomes achievable within the respective delivery proposal. And these will be used as a basis for any additional payment mechanisms should demand exceed the service delivery volumes established during the tender process. As noted, as councillor Bradwell referred to, we've reached an arrangement with the Police Commissioner and the CCG partner representatives, and that any additional payments applied through this mechanism will be subject to approval within the context of a tri-part agreement with financial contributions informed by the source of demand. The contract will be an open book accounting approach and the basis for assessing whether the service provider is generating excess profit. The open book approach will enable any efficiencies to be apportioned via gainshare mechanism should the actual cost of service delivery be below the tender price delivery cost. And finally, the performance monitoring will be driven by service user outcomes. It's based on industry standards and timely interventions to support individual risk mitigation. Service credits will be included and will be targeted at a limited number of key performance indicators aligned to service user experience and outcomes achieved. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that, Alina. I'll start with councillor Pepper, who is hopefully with us on screen, just to relay the comments of the scrutiny committee. Are you there, Nigel?
Yes, I'm here. I can hear loud and clear. Yeah, thank you for inviting me to speak. However, I don't have much more than a one liner to say to you. The Public Protection Committee considered the report on that very hot day of the 19th of July. For those executives that was there, they may recall it was, there was some heated debates and discussions that day, but not on this particular item. All members were supportive of the proposals, and overall, it was by far unanimous decision to support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Nigel. Okay, open it up, then, for questions, comments from the committee. Yes, councillor Davies.
Thank you. I'm trying to make sense of section five, the budget and cost implications. I'd be grateful if you could talk through what the previous budget was, what the budget is for the new tri-part arrangement is. And it would seem to be the CCG, although it's described in somewhat flowery language, is actually cutting their budget for this. Are we therefore making up the shortfall?
Yeah, thanks very much for the question. The CCG are actually increasing their budget. They haven't contributed, over the last five years, any financial support into a tri-DA service. So originally, we looked for a split and asked them for £250,000 per year contribution into the service. What they have agreed to is 150K. So you are right, it does look like they're not contributing the 150,000 that we've asked them for. What they've mitigated in terms of that circumstance is that they will employ their own specialist DA advisers into acute services where there is a need, so therefore, not needing to put the 100K into the service, but supplying that service themselves. And again, that will be continually monitored through the performance element to see actually, has there been a growth and are they meeting the demand that we expect they are with that type of service?
The purpose is, it would seem, and very sensible that is as well, is you have a countywide scheme, centrally managed, centrally audited, that way you can provide the same service level no matter where you are in the county. What's their rationale? Because at the cynic, he says, that they don't want to write a cheque and they're going to kind of fluff something up with some supposed job roles, as opposed to kind of putting the money where the mouth is.
I don't want to, Martin obviously has to work with these people. I don't have to work with them so closely. It was a disappointment, I have to say, when they wouldn't contribute what we were asking for. However, you know, they have covered it by saying they're going to put stuff in. I have to say, we will be monitoring that, because actually, I know from, especially within Covid, the IDVA service, which are the specialised workers, were in there, you know, we used to have them working in maternity unit in A and E. And we know that people then took support from this service. So it is a valid service that was being taken up in the hospital, but they don't, they say they're short of money, they couldn't pay the full amount, so they're going to put something in themselves. But we will be monitoring it, because, you know, I just don't think it's right that if there's people who are going in there and do need some advice and that, they should be getting the right advice. I'm not saying there won't be, but we do, I agree with you, Richard, we just need to monitor it.
Councillor, sorry, Martin, but then councillor Worrick, because obviously, it's all part of the Integrated Care Board.
Just in terms of, in addition to that, where Alina spoke about our provisions for future demand and increase in demand. So actually, as a tripartite, we're talking about having a forum where if the demand increases from Health, actually, we'll be looking to go back to Health and ask them for the additional funding in that tripartite. We're fairly comfortable and confident in terms of our projection, in terms of demand from the other services. It's Health that we are actually probably more worried about, that we're not getting the demand through, which is why we put in the provision to say if that does happen, there's the conversation that Health will need to step up and contribute more.
But on that, I mean, there is, there's the issue, I mean, obviously, there's conversation about, obviously, there's a Covid effect, and that's one, yet another, you know, consequence of Covid, obviously, because people were cooped up together, more things happened. So interested in terms of what the demand is, and there's the issue of a demand which isn't, hasn't actually been presented, shall we say, but what will happen if there is more demand than we have? And I could see from the budget, we're spending, the project's spending twice as much on the community as it is on the, on the actual shelters, if you like, which is probably right, but what will happen, say, there's a lot of demand, who's going to pick up the excess, excess money?
So if I just cover off the bit about where we believe we have the hidden demand with the Health and how we've kind of calculated some of that. So publicly, people were interviewed in terms of where they reported, nationally reported, where they were reporting domestic abuse. Seventeen per cent of that survey said they reported domestic abuse into police, and 17 per cent said they reported that into Health. So equal reports are going to both Health and police. The police are referring 80 per cent more people into the service than Health in terms of the referral numbers that are coming through. So there is a hidden gap somewhere within Health, that Health are saying they're picking up in other ways through their safeguarding elements. So we believe, based on the national figures, that there is a hidden demand from Health, and we've had those conversations with Health around their referral figures. So we can expect, once we put this service into place, that there will be an increase in demand. So that's the first, that's why, that's why, because what we saw from policing, we think policing's right. In the last year, we have, policing has contributed to an 88 per cent increase in referrals from DA. And that's for better training to our staff, better referral mechanisms through to the outreach service in IDVA, which has seen that increase, because we have become, in policing, more aware of our duty around domestic abuse. So that is driven up, and that's what we've seen over the last couple of years, which is where we've put the interim payments in, which is talked about where the demand current is. We think that's plateaued now, but we have got to worry about Health. But Health at the moment are mitigating that internally themselves, which councillor Bradwell quite rightly said, we will, we will be monitoring really, really closely. The reason we've gone for outreach and what we can expect to see there is because actually, this is around prevention. We don't want them to get to a stage where we actually have to go really, really high risk, which becomes the really expensive method. If we actually get them at an earlier stage of abuse, we're using more of the, I don't want to say lower level, because it's really, really important, and any level of domestic abuse is bad, but actually, our more universal offer, which is at the cheaper end, will be able to scale more victims and will be able to have the engagement to drive down, and actually, it forms part of the prevention, rather than trying to always be a response to, to what's happening.
Yeah, I mean, it's not just cheaper, it's obviously better for the family not to have the horrible disruption of force removal and all that stuff. Did you want to come in, Alina?
Yeah. Just to go back to one of the points that you said, councillor Hell, the tri-part agreement, the financial contributions will be, will be based on that source of demand, so to give reassurance around that. So wherever that demand's coming from, that tri-part agreement that will be in place will be underpinned where that demand's coming from, so that cost isn't levelled at all parties.
If the budget exceeds, if the demand exceeds 1.7 million, who is going to cover that?
So where, who's driving that demand? So if that's Health, that contribution will come from Health. That's the way the tri-part agreement is going to be written. Yeah, okay. I mean, that is subject to approval, but that's the basis.
I just want to come back in the PCC's defence, because we've got a perpetrator programme, which is the other side of domestic abuse, and that's coming up to be re-procured, and the PCC will be re-procuring that. Obviously, we'll be working closely with him. Martin and the team will be, you know, working closely with him, but, you know, he will be paying for that, so that's the other half of this service, really. Thank you, Leader. A very, very small point, but just in the interests of precision. We're now into new territory with the, with our health colleagues, and actually, this work sits under the Integrated Care Board, which is the new term for our health partners. But just to reassure you that both councillor Boket and myself do sit on that Integrated Care Board, and together with the Integrated Care Partnership, we too will be keeping a very close eye with our health colleagues on this piece of work.
Yes, I mean, all of this is integrated, because there's alcohol abuse, substance, and all of these are all interrelated, aren't they? So I think all the key partners we've talked about are involved. Just going back to councillor Davies's point on budget, so obviously, 5.1 there, you identify 800,000 of spend. So can you just explain, so I can quite work it out, where the, the other 900,000 is, what's that going to be spent on? Yeah, basically, it says that the outreach is 800,000 and the IDVA, the refuges, is 249,000, giving you 800,000, but the total cost is 1.7. So is it, just, I'm just trying to get my head round.
Yeah, if I could help there. So that is the current cost of the current services, so that's the existing contract price for the current services as they stand in the contract, with no additional monies that have been taken through. So that's the current cost of both services with no additional monies in the current contracts. So it's 840,000 for both the IDVA and the outreach, that's the current contribution. But later in 5.1, when we talk about how much is currently being spent to maintain those services where they are, which is the 1.36 million, so that's the additional funding that ourselves and the police and we've had from external grants, the short-term funding aspect have come in. So that's how much it's costing at the moment to hold these services stood still now. The projected budget is feeding in all the additional expectations around demand and the additional service elements that have come out really strongly in the service review around the need for that recovery element and the outreach and engagement element. So that's where the difference in the costings has come on, that's the, that's the current cost.
Okay, I understand all of that, but I think in terms, Andrew, of, where's Andrew gone? It's not clear, because effectively, what we're saying here is we're going to double the budget, which I'm sure is justified, but I think in terms of transparency and understanding what's going on. So what you're saying, currently, the current budget is not, is overspending effectively, so you're going to cover that, but also put an additional resources in as well? Just, just in terms of clarity, that's not at all clear from the papers, is it? Hopefully, in future, we'll be a bit more clear what was actually going on.
Alluded, we had some Covid funding as well in, in this area as well. So over the last year, or two years with Covid, we did have some Covid grant, because, you know, we, the numbers were going up. So I think, if the paper's not clear, I think we can set that out, because, you know, and as has been said, PCC and ourselves bid to government for additional monies that have paid for the IDVA service. We wouldn't have been able to manage with looking after people had we not been able, but that's all one-off funding and is not recurrent. So I think maybe we need to probably just explain, if we could have a note round probably to the executive, about the additional funding that we've got through the year, because I don't believe that's in here. I might be wrong. Is it in here? All right.
That's over the three years, or is that every year? The 400,000 from the Act, is that every year?
Yes, they're annual.
That annual, I mean, the MOJ, 46,000 over MOJ for three. I mean, there is a total imbalance here in terms of accepting what you said, but fine, but I think we just need to be clear, if we are proposing to actually increase this budget, which presumably then will have to go into the base budget next year, because obviously, this contract will start, I can't remember when you said, later on in the year, isn't it?
It's April 23.
April, so the next, so we are then committing the base, but I just, I think we need to be a lot clearer as to what actually is happening here.
So the additional amount, what we can do is provide the executive how that's being made up. That, that is not being met fully by the councillors, Martin and Rachel's alluded to. That's coming through various increases through the PCC.
I'm not, I'm not questioning the rationale. What I'm questioning, what I'm asking is a bit more clarity on actually comparing, you know, when we normally look at budgets, we see what we spent last year, or what we planned to spend, what we actually spent, and what we, what the change will be for the future. Because obviously, we are in challenged times, as you're well aware, in terms of finances.
I mean, 5.5 in the report is really relevant to that point, just it gives that breakdown.
Thanks, Leader. Yes, I'm feeling a bit fuzzy this morning, so I think a bit more clarity would be helpful.
You've been celebrating with Liz, then? That's what we've been up to.
Waiting for a call. I wait for the call. My thought is this, I mean, obviously, this is an important service. It's important for Lincolnshire and for its residents. We can set a budget and we manage the service on the basis of that budget, but we're not in control of the demand on that budget. And, you know, we all know that in economic downturns, it's all through history, we see it, domestic violence increases, family breakups worsen, children end up going into care and other things happen. So I just wanted some clarity, I think, in my own mind about how we are placed as a council, as a county, in managing the expected increase in demand on this service against the budget. And I think I got the answer, that more money would come from Health, but I just want you to explore that and just try and nail that down a bit further, because I think as we go forward in the next 18 months or so, it's clear this is going to be a service that's going to have more demand placed on it, and I want to make sure that we are doing everything we can for the people of Lincolnshire to make sure the service is well-equipped.
Yes, I think, to make it really crystal clear, is that we've obviously done the prevalence of demand and the increase of demand, which has got us to the budget of where we are, because we think that's what we need to sustain, both in terms of doing prevention work and also the intervention work through both adults and children. The additional demand, what we're saying is to be really, really clear is, we will monitor demand and track demand on a regular basis to make sure who it is that's increasing that demand and where that increase is coming from. Once we understand where that increase is coming from, we will have those tri-part conversations to say, this increase is coming from your area of service that is putting an additional burden on the, on the domestic abuse services that we have for the county. And the expectation would be that they would then step up more money to enable us to make sure we meet that demand. So if that, if that additional demand came from policing, we'd look to go back to the PCC. If it came from Health, we'd look to go from Health. If it came from another agency that reports and drives that demand, we'd look to go to them as well. So that's the clear element.
And just to add to that, the contract will be written in such a way where we can turn things up or down. Also, Rachel alluded to the eligibility criteria, that will, there's the opportunity to, you know, introduce change around that.
Can I just say, Leader, that the word, the word expectation fills me with dread, you know, and I hope the contracts are going to have a little bit more than the expectation of someone will do something, that someone will do something. Because if you have a family on Friday night that turn up needing support, there shouldn't be an argument about budgets and who's going to pay for it. The expectation should be a certainty, I think, that someone is going to deal with it and we'll sort it out behind the scenes afterwards.
Yeah, I think, just to really allay your fears, I think the emergency element of it will always be there, because that's always going to be there, and that's what the emergency element is, this, this, the demand increase will be a slow burn, it won't happen immediately and quickly, and will give us the opportunity to have those robust conversations. And there really is a desire to make sure that in all the, in all the conversations that we have, and as much and as much as it is disappointing that health have decided to manage their own demand themselves and only put part of the funding in, you know, we will be robustly challenging to make sure that, actually, if there is an increase, we will be going and we've had those conversations with them, that we will be coming back to them.
Thank you, Martin. Two questions, really. Probably first one to Martin, really, is I notice in the media that the PCC is setting up a scrutiny panel for supposedly violence against women, et cetera. And I just wondered how, because it's there to scrutinise, but I did also notice that it's there to advise and to put ideas back into how the service could be provided. I wondered how that would feed into sort of this contract. And just touching probably from the concerns that we've had already, which is if health are going to go their own way, what's stopping them advising people to go to one of the other partners?
I'll deal with the Violence Against Women and Girls Strategy scrutiny panel. So the PCC has created an independent scrutiny panel to have a look at what the police are doing in relation to the response around violence against women and girls. There is a superintendent who leads that programme in policing, Suzanne Davies. She actually reports directly to me and feeds in through then that into any domestic abuse because I oversee, obviously, the domestic abuse partnership team within my role as assistant director here. So we will use all of the best learning that we can, bearing in mind that violence against women and girls, the definition does pick up domestic abuse. Domestic abuse fits in with that definition both nationally and locally of what we've adopted within policing. So there is a correlation and we have already got that link where our lead for that within policing links directly and reports directly to me and then we utilise that sharing on anything we need to do. And it's utilising all of that knowledge because this will never stand still. DA will never stand still. It will change. It will look different depending on what's going on. And, you know, we've talked already about the cost of living crisis is likely to drive it up. And we've got to be prepared for that. And part of this service is around that engagement and outreach, early intervention, prevention. So we don't get the uplift in demand. We can prevent it earlier at its lowest level. Just remind me the second question? Yeah, I would be very surprised if any service kind of takes that on and doesn't have those conversations with the individual who is referring to see exactly where they came from. And we will, not only obviously do we track agency referrals but also self-referrals. So if we see spikes in self-referrals, then actually we can have a greater conversation with our victims about actually where did they originally report to, to see if that's happening.
Presumably there's a baseline for the health. So you'll have an idea of what's there already, then any fluctuations can be looked at. The other thing probably just worth asking about is the other side of it, which is exit and how that's managed via the contract because difficult, you know, when do you exit? Do you, you know, if you do it too early and all that. So what are you going to put in the contract to sort of encourage a proportionate exit from the service? Because obviously, hopefully, if all goes well, you know, in an optimistic world, things will settle down and everybody's managing. But I just wonder how you're going to put, how that's going to be managed via the contract.
Yeah, so there's a range of measures that are popped into the contract to manage exit, whether that's poor performance, whether that's coming to, you know, changes around the particular service means that we want to recommission in a different way. So the contract will take care of that. But again, to emphasise, as we approach exit, we're talking about nine months to 12 months before that, we'll undertake a fundamental commissioning review where partners involved in that work. But the appropriate measures will be built into the contract to be able to manage any exit, whatever is creating that need, whether that's a normal coming to the end of its lifetime or it's because of poor performance. And it's same with the tripart agreement, it's exactly the same. There will be measures in that to manage where there's shortcomings.
Okay, any further questions? Anybody else? Yes, councillor McNally, down.
Thank you, Leader. Just on 1.1, we've got approximately 30,000 sort of residents that are victims. We've got 10,000 that are reported to the police and I think you've said already that the same amount were reported through health. So where did you get the 30,000 from? Is, and if that is right, where is the other 10,000? And what do you think's stopping them from reporting it?
So some of that would be self-referrals where they're not at any, they're not involved in, they've not gone to police or they've not gone to health, so they self-refer into the service. There's also kind of a plethora of third sector services that are self. There's also that they report nationally, so they might live in Lincolnshire, but they'll report themselves into a national DA service that then comes back into. So all of that data kind of creates the additionality. So that's where that comes from.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Thank you. So recommendations are there on page 16. First one is that we approve the commissioning of this service from April 1st, 2023 and obviously delegates to the director in consultation. And I think there's been quite a bit of conversation about some of the, you know, some of the detail probably just need to be just worked through. So are you happy to agree those recommendations? All those, please, in favour, please show. Thank you. That's clearly carried. I think that was unanimous, wasn't it? Yes, thank you. Okay, then. Thank you very much for that. So we move on to item six then, which is Revenue Budget Monitoring Report for this financial year quarter one. So who is, Andrew, is it first?
Yeah, I'll introduce Leader, if that's okay, before handing over to Michelle. So I think the key message for this report, as much as anything, is what's not in it compared to what is in it, given the timeframe that it covers. And Michelle will cover the in-year impacts. So I just thought it would be worth noting for the executive about, you know, how time has changed since we set this budget back in February. Clearly, there's been plenty of mention already of the cost of living crisis and what have you and, you know, other economic effects. But I think the main message to share this morning as we head into the busy autumn period in terms of when we're starting to set and assess next year's budget setting is that the inflationary effects that have been the undertone of some of the comments today. Clearly, when we set the budget in February, inflation was expected to be a one-year issue. Clearly, we're now tracking through the Bank of England MPC documents, the Office of Budget Responsibility documents, at least a three-year impact at the moment. So clearly, anything of that timeframe and magnitude in terms of the figures that we're talking about, when we're talking about pay, when we're talking about energy and when we're talking about contract inflation can have a significant compound impact. And Michelle will talk about some of those initial views today, albeit it is a moving feast. I think, again, you've referenced all eyes on Westminster really in terms of how the government intend to respond to some elements of this crisis. But I think it's just worth noting that the message during the summer has been no new money coming from government, albeit whether that changes under a new administration or not, we'll see and we will continue to report that back. Just also to reflect that the sectoral bodies such as the LGA, CCN, county treasurers, for example, continue to lobby hard. You know, these were all unanticipated costs. They're all considerably higher than we were looking at when we were planning. And as we know, there is still not a lot of money in local government. So there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. And again, as these meetings progress throughout the year, I'll be keen to share any of the key messages that are coming out of those, if that's okay. Thank you.
Yes, on that, I mean, obviously, the effects of in-year inflation pressures have not material because this is the first quarter. But I presume you're anticipating the next quarter and the final quarters that there will be quite a big increase in pressures, cost pressures. And obviously, we've already had conversations and I know you're doing a lot of work, confident that we, you know, we have a, we increased our contingency budget and we have other reserves and mechanisms we can undertake. So just to reassure the public really that we will manage this year. But a lot will, and then for the following years, a lot will depend on the actions of whatever the government decides to take in terms of support it gives directly and grants and also what it's going to do about council tax increases and all the rest of it. So there's a lot of uncharted waters out there, but it is going to be very challenging. And fortunately, we are in a strong financial position, so we can withstand this. But it will be very interesting to see how the government copes with an expectation of a 2% inflation rate for three years, which is what they said when they gave us, gave look at their settlement last year, which is completely out the window now, isn't it? So we'll wait and see what they come up with. But as always, we'll take the necessary actions to make sure we get through the year in some sort of reasonable shape and, more importantly, make sure that services are maintained. But there will be some pressures and there will be some things probably won't happen as quickly as we would have hoped they would have happened, for example. So, Michelle, do you want to just do the detail and then I'll open it up for comment?
I will, thank you, Leader. And I'll pick up on a couple of those points as we go through. So the report summarises our forecasts for quarter one, which is the period up to the end of June. And as we've just mentioned, quite a few things have changed from that point. So our current forecast excluding schools was an overspend of 705,000, which predominantly relates to overspending children's services around the external placement costs and cost of social legal care for that service, which is partly being offset by use of one-off grants and some staff vacancies in that area. Whilst this is a minor variance, which is often the case in quarter one, we are starting to see the impact of some of the inflation on our budgets and becoming aware of some of the pressures now that have been created in year, particularly around those that we've just mentioned, around staff pay, utilities and some of our contracts. So whilst a pay settlement hasn't been agreed for local government in the current year yet, the offer that's been made by the local government employers is around 4% over the what we've budgeted for. So that is likely to create an in-year cost pressure of around seven and a half million pounds. Members might also be aware that we buy most of our gas and electric through contracts purchased via Espo. And they were able to lock in quite a lot of prices early in 2021, which has meant we haven't really seen the effect of those price increases that have hit the domestic market and that those contracts kind of come to an end in October. Espo are letting us know that the new contract prices that they're already seeing show increases of around 200% on our gas prices and around 100% on electricity, which will likely to create in-year cost pressures of around 1.6 million. But of course, that then gets built into your base and we need to monitor that going forward in terms of long term and how long those prices will stay at that level. As the Leader's already mentioned, when we set the budget for this year, we were anticipating that we would feel the cost of some of these pressures during the year. So we moved our corporate contingency budget by three and a half million. So we currently have a corporate contingency of six and a half million. The executive approved a proposal to go through to council in September about some of the use of the underspends from the last year. And also 2.3 million is part of the proposal that will go to council in a couple of weeks to also increase our contingency in year to deal with some of those pressures. The team are currently working on the forecast for Q2. We expect a lot of this to be coming through into Q2 and obviously looking at what we can do in year to offset some of those pressures. As the Leader has said, quite content that we should be able to manage them in year, but then also looking at what that means for our longer-term finances. So at that point, I'll just hand over for any questions.
Can, Michelle, any questions, comments, please? I mean, it's, I wouldn't say frightening, but sobering actually to look at when you look at some of these cost increases and across the board, really. So it will be a challenging period. Early days yet in terms of this year's budget, but also we'll wait and see what the government comes up with in all sorts of ways. And we don't know what that will be. But I don't, I mean, obviously, there is a big concern about small businesses in the county, the councillor Davy, which, again, the government will have to, the new prime minister will have to come up with something, I think.
Yes, I mean, I think the issue for small businesses, as you know, energy costs are not capped on businesses. So they are really struggling with rising energy prices. It's my personal view that, and as you know, I've expressed it many times, hospitality, leisure and tourism sector is going to be the one that's going to carry the brunt of the business closures, I think. And obviously, any measures government can bring in in the budget that I believe is at the end of this month will be helpful. But, you know, it's, there's going to be business failures. It's not, you know, I don't think any of us can set an idea of how many and what level, what percentage. But there is quite clearly a lot of pressure on small businesses across the country and in Lincolnshire in particular. We're working closely with the Federation of Small Businesses. They've made their submission to go to Treasury directly on what needs to be done. And I'm supportive of most of their views in terms of what should happen. Obviously, we'll wait and see what the new government and the new team bring forward in the next few weeks. But without some urgent support, we will see business closures and business failure. And I think most of us know at least one business that's probably already closed. And the challenge is going to be making sure that we keep our economy in Lincolnshire as resilient as possible through the next few 18 months or so.
Thanks, your councillor Smith. Obviously, overview and scrutiny did debate this. And obviously, there has been circulated the comments. Anything to add?
Thank you, Leader. Yes, if I may, overview and scrutiny, as it shows, we believed at that time that government may have changed its tune on potential additional monies to us in local government. Obviously, from what Andrew's just said, that at present hasn't happened, which, let's be honest amongst ourselves and to the general public, if they don't, we're in trouble. As you say, we are quite financially resilient as a body and we're quite fortunate to be in that position. But long term, that will mean that things that our residents want us to do, like deal with potholes, like deal with drains, footpaths, a myriad of other things, we're going to be, you know, having to delay things or start to struggle to do things. One thing that's not, wasn't sort of touched on is there are obviously other cost pressures. So around construction, the actual rate in terms of inflation is about 27%. So that will have a massive impact on anything we want to do with roads, any school infrastructure upgrades we may wish to do. Obviously, we're going to have to factor that in and do what we can for our residents. But as you've said, it's been circulated, Leader, and I think the important points around the pay award and gas and electric have been touched on. But I just thought I'd make that point because I think it's important for our residents to be aware that we are resilient, as you say, but there are other areas that we may have to delay or things we would like to do that if we don't get some support from central government, we're not going to be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any further comments, questions? The recommendations are that we note the position and decide any corrective action. I think there's any at this stage, but obviously, as Andrew said, as we go through to the next quarter and of course start working out and doing work on next year's budget, that's when some decisions will have to be made. But we will update councillors, other councillors in terms of what we think needs to be done. In terms of, as the chief executive, you're already looking at a various range of options to what would be available to members to mitigate.
That's right. Thank you, Leader. So the corporate leadership team are working with our senior leaders to look at reviewing all of our budgets in terms of looking at efficiencies and looking at a range of options which we'll bring to you in due course.
So are you happy to then support the recommendations? All in favour, please show unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, then, we move on to item seven then, which is the capital monitoring report. So is it straight to Michelle for this one, is it? And after you pick up some of those issues that councillor Smith raised, but as well, please, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you very much, Leader. So the second report this morning is the Q1 position for the capital report, for the capital budget. So the current forecast position is an underspend of just over a million pounds, which is less than 1% of our budget. As usual with the capital programme, a lot of underspends are due to timing rather than cost of projects and programmes. So some slippage in the children's social care, small programmes of works there in part of that. You'll see that there isn't much variance reported on the rest of the programme, which is very much to do with us working through at the moment that construction inflation that we've spoken about and what the impact is on that, on some of our, on the majority of our programme, actually. And looking at where we need to rethink about our budgets, make sure that they reflect what the anticipated costs are. Whilst a lot of our programmes and projects build in some contingency for inflation, that's obviously running at a higher level than we were expecting. So during Q2, we'll be looking at those and then building that into the Q2 reporting. and also then factoring that into the, the discussions around the, the programme going forward as part of budget setting. So very much key to, to look at some of those big projects around the construction areas and to see whether that impact on our revenue budget in terms of affordability is something we need to re-phase.
Thank you, leader. Yeah, just to, to briefly, as you'll have had the report, a discussion was had at SMB around, uh, essentially, uh, major project, major building projects, major highways, major, uh, potential school upgrades. Uh, because obviously there was a concern by the board, uh, that, uh, certain projects that are proposed may have to, to be sort of stalled in time. But Michelle assured that any project in flight will, will progress. And it's obviously the, the twenty-three, twenty-four financial year that, that will have to have that, that conversation. But, uh, it was good to have that, that clarification because obviously it's a concern, as, as already alluded to, leader, with the inflationary issues. Um, I think the best thing that, that we can do, uh, as individuals, as a body, is, is do what we can as councillors to lobby, lobby government, as I've said before. Because without that, I think we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions come twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, without wishing to be overly political, leader, I think some of us have had this concern for a while that this wasn't a transition or transitory phenomenon. Uh, and I think if I'm honest, the Bank of England acted too slowly. But that's a personal view, it's obviously not a corporate view, but I think it's important to state that because there's been a couple of councillors that have said this in other meetings, pensions ostensibly. Um, but I think we need to be aware of that and, and do what we can to put, put pressure on, on government and, and just be, be mindful of external factors beyond our control, like the war in Ukraine, which is obviously still very much ongoing and still will, will be a factor on, on it, um, certain things, whether it's food prices or other, other matters. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, thank you, those, yes, we did, there was, and I was attending, I gave commitment that any, any cap, any programmes which are already in progress will be honoured. Uh, you know, because we're not going to suddenly stop doing stuff. But there will, I think inevitably be a, uh, and I think the chairman did say, well, obviously some clarity on, you know, future programmes and whether they will be delayed or not. Again, will depend on, uh, what decision government makes. But I think the, the, the big thing that government's got to do is get inflation under control because, you know, it will be very difficult unless we get, get it back down to levels which, which will be painful. And I think we've got to accept the pain will come and it's got to be done. Otherwise, those of us a bit longer in the tooth remember inflation in the seventies. It is not a happy, not a happy scenario at all because it's very difficult in all sorts of ways. So Michelle, so we're projecting now, hopefully at the end of the year, it'll just be a one percent underspend of the capital, which will be novel for the council council. Are you, uh, are you confident that's what you'll be telling us when we come to the year, year-end accounts? I know inflation is working, doing well on that front.
Uh, so as always, um, we rely really heavily on the delivery of our major schemes because, you know, um, any slippage on our major schemes, um, does create big shifts in our forecast at the year end. And it doesn't take a lot to, to kind of put a, a major scheme off, off course. So, um, if you want me to promise you, our underspend is going to be one percent at the end of the year. I'm not going to do that on the capital programme. Um, but we, we look to, to try and make sure that our programme's affordable and we can deliver it in the time scales that we want to.
Thank you. Right, okay. So I'm going to go to the vote then. So the recommendation there on eighty, page eighty-five, that we note the reports and similar to the previous recommendation, all happy with that? Please show unanimous, thank you. Okay, move on to the final paper then, which is Corporate Plan Success Framework, quarter one. So is it Andrew or is it Caroline?
Caroline.
Caroline, right.
Thank you. Um, uh, the report outlines the performance of the delivery of the priorities outlined in the corporate plan as at the end of quarter one, so June twenty twenty-two. Um, you recall from previous reports, obviously we use two mechanisms for, um, reporting the performance to you. Firstly, key performance indicators and then activities which monitor the progress of key, key activities within the plan. So starting with activities, there are thirty-nine activities that we can report to, to you in quarter one. Uh, fortunately, all of these are either progressing as planned or within agreed limits. There are seven activities that we are, we class as amber rated, which means that a, a milestone, so an element of that activity is slightly behind. But overall, uh, we're still on plan and confident that we can achieve that. The full details of all the activities are on page one hundred and thirty-three of your pack. Uh, the amber activities that, um, that I mentioned comprise of A twelve, which relates to the development of a delivery plan for waste infrastructure uh, required to support the separate food waste collection. And you'll see, uh, in that page, one hundred and thirty-three, the full details of the narrative to support each one of these. There are four activities with adult, within adult care and community wellbeing that are rated amber. The first, eight thirteen, uh, relates to working with partners to implement the Housing for Independence strategy. And in particular, the extra care accommodation for older people and supporting houses, housing for working aged adults. The second adult care measure relates to Maximising Independence Programme across adult care, particularly utilising assisted technology and digital support. The third activity, A fifty-three, relates to the development of a prevent, the Lincolnshire Prevention Alliance for Better Mental Health. Um, A twenty-one relates to, um, the governance arrangements being developed around our integrated care system. Uh, and finally, activity thirty-four relates to working with partners to enhance community safety with a particular focus on prevention and early intervention. And full commentary is, is in the pack. The final activity that is right, rated amber is in, uh, is around staff attraction and retention. Um, and the activity and the work that's ongoing in that area. There are no key activities that are red-rated this quarter. However, we have included an update on activity A twenty-three from the previous year, uh, which related to broadband coverage, uh, which was reported red in quarter four, but is now, um, is now green and we wanted to put an update in there for you um, so that you can see that the progress that's been made around that activity. In terms of the key performance indicators, um, those where we have a target set, there are twenty act, uh, key performance indicators in this report. Seventy percent of those KPIs are either exceeding or achieving their target. Those that are exceeding their target are now represented by a gold star. Uh, this is due to some of the technology that we're now using, um, where we've had, we've placed a kind of a double tick, where we're exceeding with a gold star, um, so that's hence the change. Those that are reported, um, as exceeding their target are the percentage of pupils in good or outstanding schools, the levels of household waste going to landfill, the, our levels of customer satisfaction and the support we provide to voluntary and community groups. There are a number of measures that are achieving their targets, um, so within the tolerance that we set. Uh, those are the percentage of schools judged good or outstanding, our levels of young people who are not in education, employment or training, and the support we provide to vulnerable children, including the number of children in care and whether those children live within a family environment. In adult care, we're seeing achievement of our targets in, uh, high levels of adult care facilities rated good or outstanding and people remaining at home ninety-one days after hospital discharge, as well as adults living within the community. We're also seeing strong performance in the improvements of our superfast broadband coverage, which I've already mentioned, as well as household waste collections. The six measures that where we are not achieving our, um, our targets relate to the early resolution of contacts to our customer service centre. We've previously mentioned, uh, the additional capacity that we've brought into the customer service centre uh, to look at those, uh, early resolutions, the number of stays lost to sickness absence. Obviously, there's narrative in the report around, uh, the reasons behind that. The access to volunteer opportunities, again, which was curtailed through, um, Covid, and improving the interaction in relation to our adult safeguard inquiries, which is a new measure that we've included the first time in our quarter one report. We've included within the report an explanation around, um, the new national formula for recycling rates, um, to try and improve, um, the transparency around what is reported to Environment, Environment and Economy Committee, scrutiny committee and what's reported within the corporate plan. We have a new national formula for recycling rates, which impact, is impacted by only three of the seven districts at the moment who have the purple bin lid collection, of purple bin lid collection. Uh, we've also seen a reduction of recycling at household waste sites, obviously, which isn't within our control due to the lovely weather that we've been having, uh, which has meant that particularly garden waste, uh, has been reduced. So we're seeing less of that taken to our, our waste sites. Um, as I say, on section four point six, there were, on page one hundred and twenty-seven, there's a full explanation of all of those waste measures. The second type of measure that we have is those where we haven't actually set a target, but they're in here for contextual purposes and the executive director has given them a kind of an overall rating. The rating doesn't show on the council website, it's here for contextual information. So there are three measures that are identified as performing well. Um, interestingly, ratio of business birth to deaths at this stage, obviously, um, this data is up to June. Uh, visitors to heritage attractions remains incredibly positive, uh, and is likely to, to remain. We're projecting, uh, high numbers of visitors, uh, going forward, particularly as we've seen in quarter two over the summer period. And the percentage of staff who voluntarily left LCC is still within those tolerance, uh, limits that we've set. There are two measures that we've got a delay in reporting nationally, which is around employment. But the service has provided an update included in the report, which is based on local intelligence. As, but we will be able to provide that data into the quarter two report. I'll hand over for any questions.
Uh, thank you very much for that, Caroline, for a good summary and just some of the, um, variations. That's very good. Uh, overview scrutiny had a thorough debate on this item, crawled all over it, frankly, so, uh, and as, as there are three main items, uh, presented there, which we'll probably talk about in a minute. But is there anything you want to add, uh, councillor Smith?
Thank you, leader. Yes, as you alluded, there, there was a thorough debate on that. I think, uh, principally on staff absence, we, we were more querying what support was available to staff rather than say a concern, there is a concern, but we accept why the, the data is where the data is. Uh, and it's, our concern was actually that we make sure that our staff have the mental health support that they, that they need and also that we are conscious that in some departments there are posts that are not filled. So staff are being asked to do more and there's less of them to do it. And you have, we have to be aware of the impacts that can have mentally and potentially physically, uh, depending on job role. Uh, in terms of the, the waste.
What should we do? If you're going to refer to each one, we'll do them in turn, shall we?
Yes, you can do, yes.
So obviously there was the, and the, there's a chart there on page one, two, four. It does say here the committee were, uh, considered at eight point eight days and rising acceptable. I'm not sure I agree with that assessment. So I suppose the question is, in terms of hybrid working, I don't think it's acceptable at all. So I just wonder, uh, what action is going to be taken because it, it's not acceptable. And I don't think we should consider it to be acceptable. And I think we should be hearing what CLT intend to do about it.
Shall I make a start and then I'm sure all the people will want to come in? So, um, uh, management of sickness is something that clearly is significantly important for all managers. Uh, we want to make sure that staff are healthy and come to work to do their best. And equally, we want to make sure that we've got greatest productivity as well so that we can deliver the services that our, that our communities expect to deliver. Um, over the last two years, monitoring sickness has been difficult because of Covid in terms of the requirement to self-isolate as well. So, um, it has been quite, um, a difficult challenge. But obviously, as we learn to live with Covid and move on, there's no longer an expectation around, um, self-isolation. Um, and therefore, when people are at work, we, and are well enough to be at work, we expect them to be at work. And we need to provide a range of support to help people to thrive and be at work, um, as well as robustly managing support for staff if they are unable to, to attend work. Um, the, the levels of sickness that we're seeing obviously varies across the whole of the organisation. Um, and obviously, the, the eight, eight figure is a, is an average across the whole of the organisation. We are seeing higher levels as we did pre-Covid, um, in the adults workforce and the children's workforce. Um, some complexities, I suppose, particularly, um, with Covid and particularly with, um, adult care and children's care, um, uh, families and, um, clients not wanting staff to visit if they're on well, um, and clearly us not advising that if they're vulnerable to do so. Uh, sorry, if the clients are, are vulnerable. Um, uh, however, uh, we do continue to manage sickness, we have sickness triggers, we have a range of welfare support, uh, we've got an occupational therapy service. Um, we do, we do manage through, um, uh, there's various different triggers that on the policy would instigate, um, a regular review with that individual member of staff. Um, and absolutely want to reassure the committee that managers are not complacent at all. Um, clearly, we want to strive to have a healthy wel, workforce that is productive as possible.
Uh, councillor Troy, I mean, obviously, there's a trend upwards and, uh, you know, what I'm asking for is, um, what actually, I mean, I, we haven't got, um, head of HR here, have we? So which is, he's not, but I mean, I think there is an issue here which needs gripping and, uh, and appropriate action, because if we don't do anything, we could be over ten percent if we're not careful. And to take the point that some of these are frontline workers, but I think there is a grey area. Somebody, if somebody who is isolating, you clear, we are clear that they should still be working, yes.
Sorry, the policy is absolutely crystal clear. If you are well enough to work, you are well enough to work and, and you will continue to work. If you're working with vulnerable clients, um, we, we may, through a risk assessment, advise you to work from home. But the advice would be that you work from home and do your admin.
Yeah, thank you, Martin. Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something that, uh, myself and Tony have been discussing. Uh, we have been below the target for a number of quarters, but clearly there is an uplift over the last two quarters, uh, last three quarters, really. So it's something that we need to address and it's something that we need, uh, the managers to address. We also have a number of long-term sickness, uh, that we need to, uh, we need to sort out as well, which is obviously affecting the figures. So it's, uh, it's something that me and Tony are looking at at the moment. And I think as, as Debbie's always, already alluded to, having them sickness back-to-work interviews and, and making sure that we're managing, uh, the workforce appropriately is, is, is the right way forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the next one, adult safeguarding, councillor Smith.
Thank you, leader. Uh, I was actually, because that's been very well covered, I wasn't going to touch on that, uh, because that's been very well covered. What I was going to touch on is the, the waste performance because that clearly has been artificially, uh, suppressed because of the new national for, formula and the fact that only three districts have, uh, the, the purple lidded, lidded bin. So whilst the figures are where they are, I think there is an element of suppression in those figures. Uh, whilst it isn't directly touched on in the report as well, one thing I was going to touch on is the issue of broadband because whilst our figures are where they are, we still have a number of communities, uh, especially in rural areas, as I'm sure you'll appreciate, leader, with your, uh, makeup of your, your own division, uh, that are actually left in a very poor state when it comes to their, their broadband provision. Uh, I appreciate that's not something that's in our direct control, uh, but I think we mustn't be complacent because we see that figure and think, oh, that's brilliant. It is, it's very good that it's there, but we still have a large number of smaller communities who actually, especially now with, uh, with things that have happened through Covid and working from home, uh, we actually need to do as much as we can to, to get that percentage up and get the last sort of not spots, uh, try and get them better, better broadband. But I haven't got any more, leader, unless anyone has any questions.
Yeah, on broadband, well, I'm, I'm quite happy. There are isolated properties which still have issues, but I have to say, all my small communities, uh, obviously have been dealt with. I mean, there have been historic issues in, certainly in the Lindses, I think, for various reasons. But I think, you know, in terms of the challenge of isolated properties, but I don't know, councillor Davis, I think we've got beyond, most communities now are either got it or will soon have it, won't they? It's the isolated properties is the challenge.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, through a combination of our, our subsidy, which is what it is, through the On Lincolnshire project, the, the other work that we've done, I think that's been very useful, is coordinating some of the community projects. And Steve Brooks and the On Lincolnshire team have got a job, done a good job there. The residual areas are actually those, um, where we've seen attempts, particularly in West Lindsay, to influence the BD UK, BD UK process by the local council, spectacular backfire and ending up in state aid debates with QC barristers and things. So I think it was a classic case of too many fingers trying to interfere and take the credit. So elsewhere, I think it's gone very well.
I mean, on, on the waste, I mean, I think, I, you know, I don't know about the government measures, but all I'm looking at is for, just over four percent going to landfill and the rest of it is either recycled traditionally or it's recycled in the, in the energy waste plant. So I'm, I don't know what anybody else thinks, I'm quite comfortable with the, uh, with the, and with the, uh, with how we're actually doing and obviously the rollout of the, uh, paper and card, which seems to be going pretty well, councillor McNaughton, doesn't it not?
Thank you, leader. Yeah, yeah, the, the, the paper and roll-up, card rollout's going on quite well. The, the, the percentage figures on the household waste recycling centres, the, the next report for the Environment and Economy Committee has got it at seventy-seven percent nearly. So, you know, it's definitely gone up from the seventy-two, but it, again, it's seasonal, so you can't justify it. Um, and the the household waste that's collected, you know, it's very difficult, because if if someone puts a a great big black bin out full of rubbish that can only be burnt, and then puts a little bit of recycling stuff out, it's very hard to get that rate up without without finding some little bit of cardboard or something in in the black bin.
Okay, thank you for that. And obviously, there was quite a long debate, esoteric almost, about targets on a certain part, but obviously, that is being addressed, isn't it? I don't, I won't, I don't think we're going to need to go into the detail, but there'll be revised targets, won't there, whatever they are?
Yes, indeed, leader. It will be between the performance unit corporately and the safeguarding unit, and that's currently being looked at.
Very good. Okay, recommend, anybody else want to add anything? Yes, councillor Troy.
Sorry, it's just to come back on the broadband, really. I live in a village that doesn't have very good broadband, and we've been through the voucher system, and I think it's worked really well. And I think it's, I think we probably need to promote that system even more, because we've had a a massive uptake of the vouchers, and because a lot of people are now working from home, businesses get more. So if you've registered your business from your house now, you get even more money. So I think it's, I think that message needs to go out more to help, to help probably West Lindsay and, like you say, East Lindsay residents even even more. Thank you.
Yeah, take that point, some publicity around that would be useful. It is a very good system, isn't it? There are various things you can latch on to, certainly businesses in villages, which then households can piggyback on. Okay, recommendations there on page 105, which is basically, we provide with information, and thank you very much for overview scrutiny for their their assiduous looking at this, these these targets. So is that agreed? All agreed? Thank you very much. I think, believe that is the final item on the agenda, so thank you for your attendance, ladies and gentlemen, and safe journey home, and we'll see who all the new ministers are and the brave new world.